My precious Father, we thank you for giving us another opportunity, Father, just to come, so it has been, Father, to discuss, Father, what is best for the city and this community, Father. Father, we thank you for the one here. Father, let us continue to, continue to work for this city and this community, Father. Father, continue to give us the, the knowledge and wisdom that you set for us, Father, to lead this city in the driving direction it need to go, Father. Father, we just thank you for the staff here, Father. Father, we thank you for the mayor and the councilman and all the staff and administration working, Father. Father, we just want to thank you for the one that had an opportunity to run for city council, Father. Father, we just want to thank you to be with them, Father. And, and, and we give you all the glory and all the praise, Father, for what you're doing. Continue to be by our side, Father, because we need you, Father. Father, we would ask a special blessing above this United States of America, Father. We need you, Father. We need your guidance and reach your understanding. Your actions is blessed in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this the City of Smith Station, Alabama City Council Meeting to Order. It's Thursday, August 27, 2020. The time is now six o'clock PM Eastern Standard Time, five o'clock PM Eastern Central Standard Time. Thank you, Mr. Stringer. Thank you, Mr. Moody, for offering the pledge and invocation. I'd like to have a roll call vote to establish a quorum, please, sir. Mr. Johnston?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Stringer?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Moody?
Here.
Councilmember Cooley?
There.
Councilmember Key?
There.
Mayor Copeland?
Here. We have a quorum. We have 100% attendance. Thank you, guys, so much for always being here. You were given the minutes from the August 11th, 2020 meeting, uh, City Council meeting via hard copy as well as email. Are there any additions or corrections? With none being brought forth, I call for a motion to the second. Mr. Key, Ms. Cooley, thank you.
Mayor Copeland, I'd like to propose that we suspend the rules and ordinances so we can address items A through J on item eight.
Ms. Cooley's made a recommendation that we suspend the rules and ordinances that we, uh, able to handle item seven A and thus for. Uh, can I get a second?
Sir.
Ms. Key, any, uh, discussion? Can I have a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Item number seven A. Mr. Johnson, will you please introduce that?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 2009 dash zero six five point oh one. An ordinance of the City of Smith Station, Alabama, amending ordinance 2009 dash zero six five, establishing the Public Works Department.
All right, you've heard the introduction of seven A. Um, ordinance amendment 2009 oh six five point oh one, establish public works department. You had a motion to second?
Motion to accept.
Moody?
Sir.
Cooley? Any discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Moving along to item eight A, resolution 2020 dash three eight three, ABC application for transfer of license for a matter of taste. Mr. Johnson, will you please introduce that?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2020 dash three eight three, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, authorizing the mayor to approve the application for transfer of ABC license, business license zero two zero, restaurant retail liquor from Lawanda Thompson, the owner, a matter of taste incorporated, the applicant, located at 2368 Lee Road, 430, Smith Station, Alabama.
Can I get a motion to second?
Oh, do you accept that?
Stringer?
Second.
Moody? Any discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Moving along to resolutions 2020 dash three to four, public, purchase public works equipment. Mr. Johnson, will you please introduce that?
One minute, sir, if you don't mind me getting to it. Now to get through all the applications. Yes, sir, right here. Resolution 2020 dash three eighty-four, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to approve the first, the purchase of specific equipment for the Public Works Department.
Motion approved.
Mr. Cooley?
Sir.
Mr. Moody, can I have a discussion? This is a skid steer to help with the Public Works Department.
Is this the skid that we talked about two months ago?
Yes, sir. Another discussion, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Moving along to item 2020, three, three to five, purchasing installation of security system in addition to the security system. Mr. Johnson, will you introduce that?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2020 dash three eight five, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to approve the purchase and installation of security cameras and supporting equipment from DCR Incorporated for the City Hall campus.
All right, you've heard the introduction, purchasing installation of security system, upgrade the one we had. Can I get a motion to second?
Motion approved.
Cooley?
Second.
Moody? Any discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Resolution 2020, three to six, purchase concession trailer and equipment for the junction for events. Can you introduce that for us, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2020 dash three eight six, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to approve the purchase of a concessions trailer and additional equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department's cultural activities.
You've heard the introduction, can I have a motion to second?
I will do it accept.
Stringer?
Second.
Moody? You're the second man tonight, ain't you, buddy?
Sure I am. Kind of working.
Somebody got a bad second. Somebody got to move around, right?
Any discussion?
I got one question. This concession, let me read you, concession, concession trailer and equipment. Who's going to operate that?
We, um, have two ladies, one that runs the concession stands currently. She runs the baseball, softball concession stands. Uh, she will be managing that and she'll have another employee that was working at Pizza D Action that is working for us as a temperature taker. So those two ladies will handle it, the ordering and buying and turning in of the money in the evenings. And I'll give you all an elaborate setup once we complete all that, how that works. And, uh, all that monies will be turned in at night and Shelby will have to handle it the next morning and so on and so forth.
So she, she don't have to have a license?
Well, she has a serve safe license already. Now, alcohol license, we are applying for the city.
Yeah, I, I was just behind a lady in the, uh, at Walmart and she was on the age.
Oh, yeah.
And the person was buying beer and she had to go get someone else to sell it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. These people, these ladies are my age. Yeah, so we don't have an issue with that. Okay? Any other discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Moving along to item 2020, three eighty-seven, Smith Station Pavilion. Will you introduce that, Mr. Johnson?
Resolution 2020 dash three eight seven, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to authorize funding for the Smith Station Pavilion.
Motion approved.
Cooley?
Motion to approve.
Second man. Any discussion? I'm sure you guys can see by the grand opening and by the vents and by the number of people that are calling Taylor to book this thing that, that is very popular. So, any other discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Resolution 2020, three eighty-eight, the Smith Station mural that is going to be underway in October of this year. Mr. Johnson, will you introduce that?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2020 dash three eight eight, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to authorize funding for the Smith Station mural.
All right, you've heard Morgan Bryce talk about this, so can I have a motion to second?
Motion to approve.
Moody, ooh. Ms. Cooley? Simmer down. Any discussion? This will be a great, great add in addition to the city. Uh, students will love it, uh, and seniors will love it. When it's completed, you're going to be like, "That, that's really cool. Sorry." Yeah. Laura, Laura coming in. Any other discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Resolution 2020, three eighty-nine, Smith Station Nature Trail. Can you introduce that for me, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2020 dash three eight nine, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to authorize funding for the Smith Station Nature Trail.
Get a motion to second?
Motion to approve.
Moody, you have a second? Cooley? As you guys know, this is the nature trail we purchased, the land, it's not just a nature trail, it's an exit for the park. If you leave the park on game nights, it's 30 to 45 minutes, almost to an hour, to exit the park because there's one in and one out. This will be two additional exits for the park as well as a nature trail that'll be on the left side of that.
Yeah, right for, uh, that's around there.
Yes, sir. The county's gonna, the county's gonna do most of the road work for us. We're doing the nature trail. It's a partnership between the county and us. The project has stalled right now and by design, but it will be ramped back up in the first of next year. Um, any other discussion on that? With none being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Resolution 2020, three ninety, Smith Station Swing Park.
Yes, sir. Resolution 2020 dash three nine zero, a resolution for the City of Smith, Smith Station, Alabama, to authorize funding for the Smith Station Swing Park.
Can I get a motion to second?
I'll get a motion.
Key?
Second.
Moody? As y'all know, this, this, uh, something that just come out of midair. We have these beautiful white oaks and so why not hang a swing from it and let people enjoy it? And, uh, people have really, really enjoyed the swing park. Any other discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Resolution 2020 dash three ninety-one, Public Works Facility. Introduce that, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2020 dash three nine one, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to authorize funding for the Smith Station Public Works Facility.
Motion approved.
Mr. Cooley?
Motion to approve.
Moody? Any discussion?
The contract being, um...
Bid and given.
It is?
It was bid. We sent it out publicly. Two people turned in a, turned, none had noticed. Tim Thompson won it. Um, he was the lowest bidder, so...
That information's in your packet.
It's in your packet.
The, the, um, the quote was in there as far as the scope of work that I wrote and the, um, the winning bid and their, their submitted bid was, is in your packet. It's two pages down, two pages down. Yep. All right, I see it. Sure.
Any other discussion?
Is this, excuse me, is this stuff, is this going to have a little frame for asphalt for this ground?
It's going to all be behind it. We will, uh, the, the pad will not be asphalt, it'll be rock. But we will have places for sand, gravel, dirt, and coal patch that, that we can access to do work on the roads. As well as a grinder and all that stuff, you know, to, uh, any other discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. Resolution 2020 dash three ninety-two. Establish cultural activities chart of accounts.
Just one second. Sorry. Got stacked in the wrong place. Back there. Pardon me, gentlemen, sorry about that. We're in the wrong place.
Resolution 2020 dash three nine two, a resolution of the City of Smith Station, Alabama, establishing a chart of accounts within the Parks and Recreation Department titled Cultural Activities.
You've heard the introduction of the Established Cultural Activities Chart of Accounts, 2020 dash three ninety-two. Any discuss, I can have a motion to second?
Okay.
Cool. Say it, Mr. Moody, any discussion? None being brought forth, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key? Mayor Copeland?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion. We go into executive session to discuss a contractual agreement. Our contractual negotiations will be out of, will be in, will be in executive session for five minutes. Can I get a, can I get a second? Ms. Cooley?
I need a roll call vote also.
Okay. Cooley, uh, Copeland, Cooley? Any discussion on that? All right, I call for the vote.
Mr. Key, he's, he's, Mayor Copeland and Cooley. Yes, sir. Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key? Mayor Copeland?
Yes. There'll be no, the, the five minutes.
For, for contracts.
Yeah, there will be no discuss, there'll be no vote taken in executive session. I can ask everyone to leave the room. There was no, there was no action taken in executive session. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session. Can I have a first and a second?
First, approve.
Cooley, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moody? Have a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Stringer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moody?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Key?
Yeah.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes. All right. Moving along to item number nine, financial statements from Ms. Shelby Branton.
If you remember who I am, Mr. Robinson, the financial statement for the general fine budget for the month ended July 31st, 2020. Our average lower taxes were $3,692.53, which you can see they've gone over budget for the year, 187,000. Our total business license income was $3,185.74. Our franchise fees received were $22,995.60. Our gas tax distribution was $2,091.41. Our gas and diesel rebuild Alabama tax was $23,4615. Our planning and zoning fees were $1,494. Our total property rental was $4,343.22. Our total sales and use tax is $57,446.00. And you'll see for the year to the end of July, you still got August and September, our, um, sales and use taxes were $429,000. That's pretty good. Our tobacco tax was $13,997. Our wholesale gasoline, gas revenue was, uh, for loves, was $6,007.20. Our wholesale gasoline revenue was $13,796. Our total income for the month of July was $106,544.21. Going on to expenses, our total administrative department was $86,662.30. Our, going on page four, our finance department was $42,994.80. Our total expenses for the month were $152,602.68, which gave us a deficit of $46,584.47. But if you look at your October 19th to July 20th, the net income is $648,883.44. Most of our expenses, $22,500, that you did a resolution to give EMA $5,000 in the fire competition, fire department, 175, or end of the month of July, they were paid out.
And that, that is what created...
Also paid for the summer pavilion as well.
And plus the, um, plus the public work. We've been doing a lot of clearing the roads, the trees and everything, getting the roads, you know, ready. So a lot of the expense we spend in public works as well.
All the work orders we had to catch up on.
Why?
We caught up pretty much now, huh?
For the most part, yes, sir.
I hope so.
All right, thank you, Ms. Branton. Can I get a motion to second to approve the budget?
Motion approved.
Ms. Cooley?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Jackson. Ms. Shelby, thank you for being back. It's good to see you back. I hope your mother's doing well. Mr. Johnson, at this time moving on to item number 10. Is there anyone that signed up to give public comments?
Let me check the roster, sir. Yes, sir. Alice Spangler?
Ms. Spangler, you're well aware that you're talking before a elected board and your comments are to be limited to three minutes.
Okay. My first comment, I'd like to direct to Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, I don't think you served the citizens of Smith Station or the candidates that ran to the best of your ability on election day or before that. There wasn't enough signage up. There was no sign on the Verity and Club, like, to vote here today. There was nothing in front. So, I, I think we could have been better served. Um, my next comment is, um, in the interest of transparency, can you start, as a customary, to list the costs of the things you're voting on in your minutes? So we know how much you're voting on?
Well, they're a matter of public record.
Well, you're not reading them, though, while you're...
Due to, due to the expense of the four-hour meeting, but tomorrow you can look online, they'll be a matter of public record.
Okay. And one thing that I think doesn't serve the interest of transparency either is that you continually suspend the rules, reading out the rules for everything. I mean, isn't that supposed to be used only in exceptions?
No. It depends on what you're doing. Uh, the last two meetings, we've had dual readings where we named, we, we, we did a naming of the roads and bridges. We talked about that. We also did dual readings on taking over the Public Works Department over the last six months. We have had about 50, 50% of the suspended rules and regulations.
But you read everything twice. And even the second time, the first time, you always read it full-time the, the whole way through. The second time, you always suspend the readings both way. I, I think, to me personally, as a citizen, I think you should read it all the way through.
And I appreciate your thoughts and I challenge you tomorrow to go on our website or in the next 24 to 48 hours, it'll be all on there for your own reading pleasure.
Okay. And the last one, what is the cost of the pavilion?
The cost of being right now is somewhere around 80-some thousand, which is far less because most of the stuff was donated.
And, um, I was directing this to the, um, whole council. Maybe you'll consider now, um, we're grumming and we're doing a lot of things to get the word out because a lot of people aren't on Facebook and people don't get the Phoenix citizen. If you revisit thinking about getting some electric signs that maybe at the park, out here, maybe by Terry's. I mean, that would really be helpful, I think, for whatever we're doing in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
AJ is here, McCurry.
Mr. AJ, I want to make sure you realize you're talking to a public, elected officials and also that your comments are limited to three minutes.
Okay. What I'm going to do here with the council, I want to pass some pictures around and I want each one of you to look at them quickly because I only got three minutes. While you're looking at them, back when Mr. Mayor was running for mayor of the city, even before prior to that, I tried to get somebody to help us out in this burning in our communities, especially around the house. Mayor comes to my driveway, I talked to him and he said, "I want you to vote." I said, "You got my vote." The reason I talk a lot, I'm here, thanks for that, ma'am. But anyway, he said, "We're going to look at this and I'm going to do everything I can to make this happen." So we voted. Shortly after that, couldn't find Mayor. Finally, after three or four months, we talked. They gave you the fire chief's numbers, had to call down and they started fire around another people's property, which is within 15, 20 foot of my fence. Never could get the fire chief on the phone. This has been going on for the last four years. We got a new neighbor moved in. He burns his grass. One of those pictures is a pile of brush with grass stuck in his own. Mr. Cooley came by our house and he looked at it. Seven days it was still smoking and he goes out to a brook, hell, and he smokes it up. We spent our life in our backyard. I have a 92-year-old mother-in-law that's on my deck. It's good to contest that. During this time, I've worked with Ed, said, "Ed, look, they killed us, they killed us." But this summer has been the worst time in my life. It's beginning to make me sick. Not a bad time because I was working on fence. My wife called me out a few days ago, well, the 19th, I ran outside on the deck, I run it up at the hose and my neighbor had a fire going and all this stuff and this is burning. It's terrible. Here it is. I don't know what it is, a piece of rubber. And I'm afraid for my safety. I get the water hose, I blow it off, blow it off my cars, off my boat cars. You know, I've got an expensive boat, but... What if right now, we got two piles down and we got another one on that side of the fence, they fixing a lot of mud. And during this time, I gotta deal with all this west wind. Ed, known Ed for a while, nice guy. This wind blows right over into my yard. I hung a piece of dental floss. Don't time steady on it. 92% of the time an hour on an average day, that swing, string comes to me. Ed pointed that out. That's why all the smoke is on me all the time. And it blows all this stuff on. What if, what if this on that rug was burning? My mother-in-law in the house thin and we gone 30 minutes. We'd rarely leave our home at all, both of us together, and burn it. What if we asleep at night? I get up at night and I did this, took my water hose, I got high pressure and faded over the fence to put this man's fire out so I wouldn't have to smell that smoke until we ain't got it. I got four dollars on a kennel, they're expensive dogs. They have to breathe this day and night. You Google up what this smoke will do to your health. I had major infections with it. I can't get in those smoke at all. Mr. Cooley said, "This is in the air." We walk back there, this smoke just going in. You can't walk in my yard. You can't spend no time out here. My throat closes up. I had a heart attack 18 years ago and it's working on me. Now, let me ask you this. And this will happen again, and it happen, and it happen. And I, I don't want to be rude to anybody in here. Mr. Mayor, I'm glad y'all doing all this. I'm not in a politics. I keep myself at home, fish, hunt, do whatever. And I'm glad to see this. But this is presenting a safety to me. If you're going to let it burn, keep the smoke and ash out of my property. That's all I want. So I won't have to smell it. I guarantee you I can light up a little candle, leaves and stuff. You can't stay in here resting. No time you're going to get out of here.
And grass clippings?
It's grass clippings. Most of the time, they dump among this stuff as you see in the picture. Those pictures are for y'all to study and look over. But anyway, tell us about what you know.
It takes seven days to burn grass clippings.
And these piles. And it's steady humidity.
So we get a lot of it. And one of these pictures, if you notice, is our backyard sometimes looks like snow. And this is what comes down on our yard, our cars, our vehicles, and on our decks. My mother is 92 years old. She suffers dementia. She's in her wheelchair. If she loves the back porch and the deck is hers, she can't hardly stay out there and she don't understand that because if you know anybody that's got dementia, you know what that's like. And if you don't, then it's rough. So she can't go out. And for me and AJ explained to her that she can't go out. That's, that's bad. So we have to put up with this. We also have neighbors across the street who has children, who has asthma. They can tolerate this. So they have to stay in the house all the time when there's air. Okay, and the other thing I want to say is...
Just final comments. It's been five minutes. Just final, just final comments.
But I like to say is, we want some kind of ordinance to stop the burning. We don't have five actors, we don't have Kennedy group, we don't have 15 members. We have Watts.
We have lots. And we're backed up with houses around us and on the sidewalks.
Mr. Cooley said, "You're boxed in."
And so you know that it is a terrible situation. We had somebody burning some leaves and some trees the other day, eighty-five-year-old woman up the street. They were far all the way up this, I mean, it was houses, leaves.
We thought our house was on fire.
We thought our house was on fire.
Eighty-three years old, she's trying to burn this big pile of stuff.
She has the hose and sitting on the back hose with the hose in her hand. You can't do that in a neighborhood as like ours is. So just know...
I have a place to take it, that's the thing. What if you trip with this hose?
And go.
Or what if the fire got away?
Go.
Somebody's gonna get hurt. And the thing about it is my family, my property is in jeopardy. They gonna burn tomorrow, the next day, the last seven, eight days?
Yes.
He's gonna burn and when they do, it goes up.
Well, thank you both so much. We understand what you're asking?
Yeah.
And we will take them under advisement.
Let me say this.
Last, last statement.
I cut that. I confronted you about a month ago and I showed you some pictures on my phone. This is not those same pictures.
This is just about, this is just about. So he, he's not even burning.
We gotta go.
He's not burning.
I asked the mayor, I said, "Bubba, I asked you about this. This is a problem. It's affecting my health, my eyes. I'm seventy-three years old." Bubba said, "Well, I feel your pain, but I ain't doing nothing about it. I'm not gonna put a burner on it then." But we've had four years to fix the place like they got a good camera, it could have been in there. And this old lady with the hose of about, Sonnenlaw, the trailer, the hog over there, cost me four hundred sixty-five dollars for dumping on two eight because I ain't, I can't dump there. But now you think about it and you think about it when you're to trip somebody, what this is doing to me and my health? Now you can laugh and you say, "Whatever. I'm serious business about this, we've had four years."
Thank you.
You understand? And now the thing that's been done, we have come up here four, five times, look, we paid our bills and this trash can, let's go, sir, we can take this in. No, fool. So I put it on the trailer, where am I gonna take it? Fortunately, I am able to afford it. You go up there with two boards, you'll pay a hundred twenty dollars. If you go up there with fifty boards, it's gonna be a hundred thirty.
Thank you, Mr. AJ, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You can talk about it.
Yes, sir, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I expect something, you hear back from this about this.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
It's in my head. So let's go. I ain't got time to worry about this all this much. And the other thing is, I feel about application to come in here and talk, but y'all did not sign it to allow me to come in here, didn't do it. That was intentional. You understand?
Intentional.
Yeah, Mr. Cooley was talking about, he got my name blocked out his phone. So when I called him to find out about this, then my wife used her phone and I'm, he answered. He said, "Just come up here." But this, we filled out this ten days, more than ten days. There was supposed to be sign of what Mr. Cooley's name, because he'd come to my house. Never was signed by nobody that would give me permission to come up here and say this. But Bubba, you knew all along, four years, you promised me.
Thank you, Mr. AJ.
You're right. But I'm gonna tell you, if you think I'm lying, I'm down. I am tired of breathing the smoke and have to worry about my house burning up and my cars.
Yes, sir.
You understand?
Yeah, you've explained it several times.
Yeah, I am.
Thank you.
I've explained it to all of the councilmen now.
Thank you.
If it fell on your car and your house and your kids, you understand?
Thank you.
Yes, I'm upset about it.
All right, moving along to, uh, any other comments or announcements from the council?
I thank you for all the poll workers and the people that worked diligently on the election, that, um, gave of their time and, uh, worked hard to make sure that it went off without a hitch. And, uh, I know the candidates will be here Tuesday at twelve o'clock to canvass the election to look at the provisional ballots. I'm not sure how many have been sent back from the state as of now that are legitimately counted to be in the city. And that is nothing that we can control. That comes from us from the state. We have to buy by what the state says. At this time, I'd like to recognize my buddy Chris Gates from CTVB. And, uh, thank you so much for being here and always being here. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to be adjourned. Mr. Cooley, Mr. Jackson. Meeting adjourned.
Signature, gentlemen.